I'm in the council chambers, City Hall, 2800 Third Street. The purpose of this hearing will be to entertain views and comments for interested individuals regarding an application with the city of Trenton for a commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate pursuant to Public Act 210 of 2005 as amended, filed by 3360 West Jefferson LLC for the purposes of a complete rehabilitation of both the interior and exterior of the building. Planned improvements include all new HVAC systems, updated electrical with all new fixtures and conduit, new plumbing and bathrooms, flooring, lighting, paint and doors. Exterior work will include parking lot resurfacing and striping, landscaping and compliance with all ADA accessibility requirements and Eagle environmental standards. The build out will feature pickleball courts, golf simulators, check-in desk, pro shop and a full equipped bar with an estimated project cost of $850,000 located in the Trenton Commercial Rehabilitation District Number Three, 3360 West Jefferson, Trenton, Michigan for a period of 10 years. Individuals or groups wishing to make oral presentations or submit prepared statements pertaining to the proposed, to the proposal may do so at the public hearing. Interested parties who are unable to attend the public hearing may submit their comments in writing to the city clerk at 2800 Third Street, Trenton, Michigan, 48183. Anyone with disabilities needing accommodations for effective participation at this meeting should contact the clerk's office, 734-675-8600, at least three business days in advance to request mobility, visual hearing or other assistance. So we'll open up to the public hearing, uh, for folks to the public hearing now for comments on the, uh, proposed commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate at 3360 West Jefferson. That is the, uh, as I described there, the, uh, new pickleball facility coming in downtown here. See, anyone wishing to speak, not seeing any there, not seeing any on Zoom. Madam Clerk, were there any, uh, written comments received to your office?
No, there were not.
Alrighty. Uh, seeing no comment, uh, on this proposal, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing. Moved and supported for adjournment at 6:53 PM. Seeing no further discussion, so move for adjournment at 6:53 and we'll get started with the regular meeting at 7 PM.
Nice picture from the outside looking from the different direction. This would be the public entrance space here. As we walk into the building, this is our public lobby space where they can, um, get in touch with, uh, the admin assistant just to the left of the picture. And it's also kind of peeking into the training room. So in that training room, this is going to be space where we can not only do large trainings for firefighters, but we can also bring the public in and hold, host and hold some of those trainings that we would like to be able to accomplish. CPR training, things of that nature. We can do all of that right here in, in our facility. And then we also identified the ability for the firefighters to keep themselves physically fit. We have a physical conditioning area and it's showing, uh, some of the different pieces of equipment that may be incorporated into that space to help keep them ready and fit for duty. And back to this and if you have any questions.
Open up to the council now for questions here. So thorough. Thanks, Chief. Very much appreciate the update and we know, um, well, a lot more to come here still and we'll, we'll even talk a little bit about some of that, uh, later on this evening. But, uh, thank you very much for the update and, uh, we'll look forward to the next one soon.
Seeing no comment on this proposal, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing. Moved and supported for adjournment at 6:53 PM. Seeing no further discussion, so move for adjournment at 6:53 and we'll get started with the regular meeting at 7 PM.
Okay. Alright, sorry about that. So, a quick little update on the, the fire station development as, as we go forward here. So, uh, you know, right off the bat, here's a, a nice quick view of what our, our current rendition of the, the new station is. And, uh, the basis of the presentation, you've seen this slide before. When we did our first, uh, talk or, or presentation, we talked about the inadequacies and the inadequacies and the deficiencies that we already hold in our current stations. What the top and foremost being the location of where our stations are at, the sizes of the spaces, um, for the apparatus, decontamination areas, um, bathroom facilities, training space, um, equipment storage, ADA compliance, and then exercise and wellness capacities for the firefighters. So going through that list of how we've addressed them with the new station. So the new station, uh, the, the current station's on the left, you know, and what those zones of response are for four minutes and how many people that covers. The new station hit exactly, uh, where we were hoping to and the coverage that it provides, uh, for the, for the residents of Trenton. Apparatus bay sizing. This picture is, is a rendition of what it would look like in, um, one section of our apparatus bay. We have five bays and I asked that they, uh, put a truck in there just so you could see some size space, um, area. But we have room to work on and around the truck while it's in the bay, which currently those things are, are challenged, um, pretty greatly, so. So you can see that there's a, a bit more space to work on the, on the apparatus. Uh, this is a little fuzzy, but, um, best picture I had for it. But we talked about contamination areas versus clean areas. On the re, the red side is a presumed cam, contaminated area. That's your apparatus space. Those trucks come back from a fire, they've been in the smoke, they've been in the soot, as well as the firefighter's gear. All that stuff gets dealt with in that red zone. Those yellow spaces are the cleaning zones or airlocks that will keep the contaminants to the dirty side of the building. And the green side is the office and living space. So we keep those areas clean, whether it's for the public areas or for the firefighters' living, uh, areas. Um, an overall floor plan, uh, that I threw in here just so you can see that we are into some pretty good details of the spaces. Um, and then when we zoom into it, we can talk about the bathroom and the shower facilities. We've, this, our design has individualized bathrooms with individualized showers in each one of the rooms. So we can go ahead and get rid of our men's versus women's slide on the communal bathroom, uh, that we currently possess. Training, uh, space and training facility stuff. So we have this, um, three-story training tower that is, um, built into an, the back of the fire station, of the new one. This provides, um, hands-on training space for the firefighters doing endless evolutions of training stuff that we need to accomplish, um, to keep our people sharp. And there's some other little rendition images of how that also incorporates into the base space. So come middle of winter, we can still do some, uh, of those training things throughout the year with regardless of weather or, or whatnot. And another picture just showing the, um, you know, the, the details of that. Nice picture from the outside looking from the different direction. This would be the public entrance space here. As we walk into the building, this is our public lobby space, um, where they can, um, get in touch with, uh, the admin assistant just to the left of the picture. And it's also kind of peeking into the training room. So in that training room, this is going to be space where we can not only do large trainings for firefighters, but we can also bring the public in and hold, host and hold some of those trainings that we would like to be able to accomplish. CPR training, things of that nature. We can do all of that right here in, in our facility. And then we also identified the ability for the firefighters to keep themselves physically fit. We have a physical conditioning area and it's showing, uh, some of the different pieces of equipment that may be, uh, incorporated into that space to help keep them ready and fit for duty. And back to this and if you have any questions.
Open up to the council now for questions here. So thorough. Thanks, Chief. Very much appreciate the update and we know, um, well, a lot more to come here still and we'll, we'll even talk a little bit about some of that, uh, later on this evening. But, uh, thank you very much for the update and, uh, we'll look forward to the next one soon. Chief Hawkins, next up here to give the update from the police side of things as well.
Okay, so now we have the police station update. Um, again, I want to thank you for, uh, the opportunity to, uh, give you a short, quick update on where we are and where we've been. So first off, yeah, obviously the history of our building, just a quick recap. It's a municipal building, uh, built in 1927. It housed the Trenton City Hall, the court, uh, police station, the jail and the original Trenton Library in the basement. And again, it served us well over time, but it was never truly intended to be a police station. It's not conducive for operations. So where do we start? Obviously the community supported the bond and it was passed by the voters August 6th of 2024. And with those funds, we have approximately $13 million to do a new police station. So we met and did programming needs and standards with BKV, who's one of the nationwide leaders in police and fire design, and locally with, uh, DAG, who Bo is here tonight, uh, representing them. Uh, so we have a local component and a national component. So we had a kickoff meeting, January 27th, 2025, where we went over programming needs with the understanding that we are going to be an accredited agency. So everything we do has to meet accreditation standards as well in the building. Um, and I know the council knows, the council's been very supportive. Uh, the location we're going to get into was selected to stay in the downtown area in the current area footprint. Now, we looked around town. We looked as well with the fire department at, at Veterans Parkway, we looked at other areas, but we thought keeping it downtown in the DDA area was going to be best for us and best for the community. So some of the problems that we identified in our current building, uh, of course, just a quick overview. We had no women's locker room changing area, really no men's locker room, no training or classroom, uh, no equipment storage, ADA compliance, no conference rooms, workout facility, break, lunch room, uh, report writing room. Our officers ate lunch, did roll call, wrote reports, tagged evidence, tested drugs, all in the same seat. Uh, we had no other spots in the station. We had unsecure outdated evidence rooms, uh, no secure interview rooms, wasted jail space, uh, temperature control and outdated jail monitoring. So those are some of the issues, uh, that we had to begin with. So we'll look at the location in the yellow circle. You can see the beautiful building there that houses the police and fire at the corner of Maple and West Jefferson. You can see City Hall, that blue square is where the new police station will be going to make a municipal complex. It is not on Veterans Parkway for anyone listening. The police department will be downtown in the same footprint as City Hall, just slightly to the west of where we're at. As you zoom in a little bit closer, you can see the police station in the, in the bottom right. You see the blue one-story police station and a, a general parking and flow area. Obviously there's some, some changes going on. We're going to make sure we have enough handicap, uh, spaces near the police station and City Hall. Uh, those are in the works and, and we've talked about carports as well. But there's a general area overview of where that police station is going to be. Uh, the bottom road is Maple. And as you can see, where you come into the complex, that is what will be formerly Third Street. If you can see that turn will be Third Street, Third Street will have no through it, it's closed now, but Third Street will be an entrance into the municipal complex. So we had a few things that we wanted to do, um, with the police station. And here is one of the renderings that I, I love. Um, and this all started with a sketch, I think from Bo, you know, we, we went over months and months of designing this. Um, on the left side, you can see what we called the glass box, but it's a community training room, community use and training room. Forty seats, um, that we'd like the community to come in, utilize and also have a space for our officers to train in. Um, the front, when we get to the lobby, you'll see some of the lobby. But what I wanted to do, and, and we'll get a better view, if you can see in the right side, we had a clock tower downtown forever at the corner of West and West Jeff. The new police station is going to have a clock tower, uh, on the front of it to bring back some of that old feel that was downtown. So there's a little bit, uh, farther look. Uh, it is going to be a fenced in gated parking, which we sorely needed here at the police station. Little bit closer, the overhang, um, protect people from the elements, but also give a good look as it comes inside the building. And you can see some of the, uh, the planters and the ballers to protect the department there. And a little bit closer in the glass clock tower there. When you walk inside, it'll be a reception and records. This is what you would first see in the lobby, uh, some screens. And what I, I love is a little history of where the department was and where we're headed. So, um, that'll be in there. This is the lobby area. As you walk, look down the lobby from the front desk into the training room all the way at the end. Uh, some great photos of some old-time, uh, Trenton officers. We needed to bring back, the fire department does a great job of honoring their history and their legacy. Police department doesn't necessarily do that. And with this design, we wanted to make sure that we honor the legacy in the last hundred years of police work at the current building. So we're going to bring some of those photos in, uh, to help decorate the walls. We had no locker rooms, had no women's locker room especially. This is a, a very important, uh, piece, just quick, I mean, it's lockers, but these lockers, we, we had some old tin school lockers that wouldn't even fit a hanger. These are going to be outfitted with power, with drying racks underneath for their vests and everything that they need. Little safes, uh, uh, which can be used for gun safes, valuables, whatever it may be in the locker room. And just another, another view of, of what that will be. Floor plan, so here's a floor plan and I go over these quickly because there are a lot of elements of a police station design that are secure and that we don't get out there. Um, you know, there are some things that are being tweaked, but there are some important pieces in this floor plan. Obviously you can see in the upper right corner, the training room, um, and community use room, which i, is going to be, uh, very important. Uh, defensive tactics, we have a mat room. The way that officers are trained now, it's more of a jujitsu style, wrestling style. And so we are going to have a mat room. Not many agencies have that, so it, it'll be something that we can house training and have training as well and bring other departments in. Physical conditioning room, we have a, a gym kind of like the fire department does. Uh, our training room, we do have a wellness room in there as well, um, more of a quiet room and, uh, it'll, uh, coincide with some of the programs that we're going to have coming up. Secure interview rooms, property, um, in the jail will be able to house up to seven people. Um, we're a short, uh, pre-arremament facility now, it'll be up to seven. There's four, uh, holding in one, uh, bullpen that can house three there. So that's a little bit on, on the floor plan. It is single-story, uh, but we do have, uh, our own report writing room, our own lunch room and break room. And, uh, you know, it's, it's hard when, when they ask, what do you want in this space? When all we can envision is eating in the same seat where we do everything else. So, yeah, the guys are excited and, and we're very excited to, uh, to get to the next step. So there is the, the external and you can see the clock tower there lit up. It's going to be a beautiful addition to the downtown and the, in the complex there. And I can't thank people enough. Brett is here from, from JS Vig, uh, Bo from, from Detroit Architectural Group. BKV's been great in the city. So I just want to thank everyone and, uh, just a quick, brief update there. If anybody has any questions regarding the police station, police department, feel free to.
Anyone from council got any questions? And, uh, as Chief Hawkins noted too, we got Brett and Bo here too from, uh, that have worked so much on the planning piece of things for us too. So if there's any other questions on that front, but. So, uh, Chief, I don't know if you want to talk about that. Well, we'll, we'll talk a little bit later on, um, about some of the, the demo progress that we'll actually be approving. Um, no, I guess I don't want to make assumptions, but hopefully approve in some of the demo stuff, um, later on this meeting. And so that'll actually get the ball rolling, knock on wood, within a couple of weeks for us here, so. But yes, so, well, uh, any questions for council? Thank you very much, Chief.
Not a problem. And I did not put my picture in there. I don't know if you're going to hang one in there, but my picture was not in the bottom of that, so. Thank you.
Till next time. Thank you very much, Chief.
He'll probably put your picture in his next time.
I, I'm assuming, yeah, dart boards.
Alright, thank you again, Chief. Alright, so plenty more updates to come on that front. So next up, we have public comment regarding items on today's agenda. Uh, this portion of public comment, um, we'll have reserved for items that are on today's agenda. Have another opportunity for other comment, uh, later on in the meeting. Asking anyone wishing to speak, please begin with their name and address. Direct all questions through me and please limit your comments to five minutes. Keep moving along. Next we have under appointments here, I'm asking for this body's approval. Uh, by appointment of Jerry Dunaway to the Traffic Safety Commission for a term expiring November 1st, 2028.
So moved.
Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Benedetti?
Yes.
Kiaba Watten?
Yes.
Hornbeck?
Yes.
Peruzzi?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rozepa?
Obstain.
Bond Crooks?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor Rozepa.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you all for your concurrence there. Uh, next we have, um, also from commissions here, um, a letter from Veronica Carrier, um, with her resignation from the civic commission, asking for this body, uh, to receive and place this on file and also, uh, send a, administer, uh, have administration send a letter of appreciation for her services.
So moved.
Moved and supported. from the Civic Commission, asking for this body to receive and place this on file and also send a, have administration send a letter of appreciation for her services.
So moved.
Moved and supported, any further discussion there? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. All right, department heads and officials, we'll go to our attorney, Mr. Ackerman here for the first item, we've got the commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate at 3360 West Jefferson LLC from our public hearing earlier.
That is correct, Your Honor. Before you is Resolution 2025-23, which is an appropriate, has maintained an appropriate notice hearing, which has already been held now, so there, what's before you is a resolution to grant a commercial rehabilitation exemption for the real property excluding land located at Trenton Commercial Rehab District Number Three, located at 3360 West Jefferson, for a period of ten years, beginning December 31, 2025, and ending on December 30, 2025, and ending on December 30, 2035 pursuant to the provisions of Public Act 210 of 2005 as amended.
So moved.
Moved and supported, any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered, thank you all very much. All right, from our DDA Director, Mr. Pacino, we have the Business Improvement Grant for 3360 West Jefferson.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, the Trenton DDA has a business improvement grant program, this reimburses fifty percent, up to $50,000 for exterior work on commercial buildings located within the DDA district. We had applicant 3360 West Jefferson Ave., formerly known Trenton Lanes, now Pickled, applied and passed their initial review, got approval from the grant committee, and then was approved by Trent DDA on the last meeting on October 9th. They are asking for a $50,000 grant, attached has been their application, includes all the amounts, what work they did, as well as a before and after photo for you to look. It is to note that usually we don't do completed projects or in process projects, but the DDA did make an exception since they were involved early on. Reimbursements will be given out as a single check once the applicant passes inspection and completes all the follow-up documentation required for the program. This would be in our facade improvement grant account, asking today for the governing body to approve the business improvement grant application for 3360 West Jefferson Avenue in the amount of $50,000.
So moved.
Moved and supported, any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered, thank you very much, Angela. All right, Ms. Cooper, City Controller here, is budget amendments for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2026.
Good evening, so for the quarter ending September 30th, 2025, I have attached budget amendments by general ledger number with detailed explanations. The two largest amendments were due to previously approved items for the fire department and a few other minor adjustments, so just looking for a motion to approve the budget amendments as of September 30th, 2025.
So moved.
Moved and supported, any further discussion? Nothing out of the ordinary.
All right, thank you.
Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered, thank you very much, Ms. Cooper. Our HR Director, Ms. Perry here, for the Blue Cross Blue Shield Medicare Advantage Plan Contract.
Thank you, good evening. In front of you are the contracts and the renewal rates for the Medicare Advantage Plans with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan. This is a fully insured plan covering the retirees who are generally sixty-five years and older, as is the common theme with insurance, this year's rates are increasing, but in shopping around these plans, this contract remains the most competitive, therefore, I'm seeking your approval for these contracts to be signed and to authorize me to do that signing.
So moved.
Moved and supported, any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. All right, we've got a few items here from Mr. Beaker at Parks and Rec. First, the Westfield Center Partition Wall, is part of our work there.
Thank you, Mayor, not to be outdone by the fire and police, but we get the Westfield Center going too. As part of the ongoing renovations at the Westfield Activity Center, we received three quotes for replacement of the main room's dividing wall from the following contractors, Gardner Voss, Urbans National Door Systems, the quote ranges from $51,541 to $82,350. After review, Gardner Voss submitted the most comprehensive bid of $54,313 to replace the dividing wall in the main room of the Westfield Building. Respectfully request, city councils and mayor's approval to award the dividing wall replacement project to Gardner Voss to allow the work to proceed in a timely manner.
So moved.
Moved and supported, any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered, thank you, and next, the Westfield Center Ceiling.
Again, as part of the ongoing renovations, blah, 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 we received three quotes, and for hallways, kitchenette, and fire room and main banquet hall for flooring replacement. Ace Kitchen and Bath, Joe's Carpet and Jay Bros., the quotes range from $34,674 all the way to $95,000. After review, Joe's Carpet submitted the lowest qualified bid of $34,674 to replace the facility's old flooring, hallways, kitchenette of the fireplace room and the main banquet hall, as well as at the Westfield Center. Respectfully request your approval.
So moved.
Moved and supported, any further discussion there? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered, for the flooring, so we'll go to Westfield Center Ceiling now.
Uh-oh, did I get it over? Sorry, guys.
That's okay.
Too many papers, I was shuffling around. As part of the ongoing renovations, we received three quotes for the replacement of the facility's drop ceiling from the following contractors, Ace Kitchen and Bath, ACP, and Dennis Bolt Construction, the quotes range from $53,600 to $136,948. After review, Dennis Bolt Construction submitted the lowest qualified bid of $53,600. Respectfully request your approval to award the ceiling replacement project, this would replace the ceiling and the entire building, the entire drop ceiling of the entire building.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported, any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered there, thank you, Tim, and then the last one, the Westfield Center Siding, Trim, Gutters, and Sofit.
As you can tell, copy and paste was my best friend on these four. Replacement of siding, we received three quotes for the replacement of siding, sofit, gutters, and trim for the following, from the following contractors, Excel Home Improvement, Wholebook Roofing Company, and New Image. The quotes range from $37,820 to $38,850. After review, Excel Home Improvement submitted the most comprehensive bid of $37,820 to replace the siding, sofit, gutters, and trim at the Westfield Center Building. Respectfully request your approval.
So moved.
Moved and supported, any further discussion?
And Mr. Beaker, on all four of these contracts, what kind of background check did we see, find out of their body of work?
So, I can, I'd have to go one by one, but we did do some, we did do checking into them, we've had different contractors that are working with us on other projects that have had experience with them. Jay Bros., for example, has done the flooring for us in the past, so that did help. Dennis Bolt Construction had some experience with a couple of our employees and different things that they've worked with other projects in other cities on.
Okay.
And so we've gone from those different things of that, but yes, we have made some phone calls as well.
Appreciate that, thanks.
Thank you, Councilman. Anyone else? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered, thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
All right, we've got a few late items tonight, City Administrator here, first up being the Trenton Village Theater Legacy Renewal Project.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council, as you guys are aware, Trenton Village Theater DIPEC group has been working on their legacy renewal project, as you were briefed on a couple of months ago, and with the DDA committing some funds towards that building, the building is ours, so we're able to use some of our bond proceeds towards the project, and the bulk of the project is the seating, they're using donated seating, refurbishing it, and then they're doing some general refresh inside the theater, so asking for you to move to approve the allocation of up to $40,000 for the legacy renewal project and related expenses.
So moved.
Moved and supported, any further discussion? Councilwoman Bond Crox.
Okay, explain to me, Dean, the $40,000, is that over and above the DDA distribution?
Yes.
Of, so, we're going to put $90,000 in...
The fif, right, the fifty from DDA has already been spent, and then this would be an additional forty.
Okay, is that, have you spoke with Noel Jackson to find out if that's where he's at with this, and that's what he was under the assumption of, or?
I've had conversations with Noel, and this is, this is the result of, there was some other funding that we were hoping would come through that would support the project that is not going to be available in the near...
Future?
The near, nearest future, or whatever, and the project is already underway, so...
Was that the Wayne County money coming from Crown, so to speak?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I'm just wondering where he's at with it, because I know when we discussed it earlier, a few months back, we were looking at maybe sixty to seventy thousand, and then when it's come down to now, for the forty thousand is the first I'm hearing of this, is this going to be sustainable for him to do this project with that amount of money? I mean, is that on board with him?
I don't know, because I don't, I don't know what his, his total, the total project cost is going to end up being, he only had very broad estimates of where the project was, was going to land.
Okay, it just worries me because I, I thought we were doing close to sixty, seventy from part of that Crown money, but, you know, if we've cut it back to forty thousand, is that going to be enough for him to proceed even further?
Well, my recommendation would be to approve this expenditure, and then we'll take, we'll take another look at how the project progresses, because you have to understand, with the, with the outlay of public money, this isn't a city project, it's a city building, but it isn't a city project, so there, it's... I, I think if there's more money needed, he's going to have to come back and ask, because, yeah.
Yeah, I know things are, you know, tight, but, okay, I mean, if that's...
This wasn't a city project, that's what you have to understand.
No, 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 the city didn't set out to do this.
We love the theater, it's, it's great, but there's been not, it's not a city project where we have had input or guidance or dictated it or ran it or anything like that.
Oh, no, no, and without, but without DIPEC, that theater would never, been there the twenty-five years either.
That's, that's a hundred percent true, but, and, and the way we've been, we've worked it with the other $50,000, is we have to, it's, this isn't, we write a check and we hand it over.
Right.
It's, we, we pay that up to $40,000 with bona fide receipts that are, or invoices that come from the project.
Right, yeah, he told me that's what they were going to do a long time, was just submit the receipts and stuff, so, no, that's great, I mean, you know, what we can do, we can do, and I'm glad that we're putting that money into the, a jewel of the community, that's for sure.
Yep.
And all the volunteers that work on that, I mean, tirelessly, and what we've done to save that, so I'm just glad that we're putting that money into it, that's great. All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Any other questions? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered, thank you, Dean, we'll go over to Fire Bid Package 2.1 Demolition.
Thank you, Mayor, before you, you have Fire Bid Package 2.1, this is the demolition for, of awarding a, awarding a contract to Blue Star in the amount of $87,800, and this will be for the demolition of Trenton Motor Inn. There's also, we're going to talk about here in a little bit, asbestos abatement, I probably should have put those in a different order or whatever, but the request here, and this is, if you look at the backup information, JSVig quoted this out, and this was the lowest qualified respondent, so we're moving to approve the recommended contract to Blue Star in the amount of $87,800, and direct the city administrator or is designated to execute the necessary contract after legal review.
So moved.
Moved and supported, any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Next up, we've got Fire Bid Package 1.1 Sightwork and Utilities for the Fire Station Work Site, and Police Bid Package 1.1 Sightwork and Utilities for the Police Station Work Site.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, before you have a couple of bigger contracts, which really get the, really get the ball rolling on the police and fire station, both of them would be awarded to Compo Brothers, which you are all very familiar with, the work they have done here in Trenton over the years, but they came in as the lowest qualified bidder on both sites, so if you, if you look in, in the package, it's, let's see, $989,437 at the fire station, and $1,178,807 at the police station, which will be right, right out back here, so. Asking for a motion to approve the contracts for Compo Brothers for site work and utility bids for fire and station builds in the amount of $989,437, and $1,178,807, and direct the city administrator is designated to execute necessary contract after legal review.
So moved.
Moved and supported, any further discussion there? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered, thank you all, and then lastly here, the Trenton Motor Inn Asbestos Abatement.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, once again, you have another contract before you, this is the same company that did the testing, the asbestos testing over Trenton Motor Inn, they've worked with JSVig quite a bit, and they have, if you look at the backup letter, quite a bit of experience, they're fully licensed, they're qualified, and this will be for the Trenton Motor Inn asbestos abatement, there will be an additional one, most likely for the VFW, but we won't, we won't probably be able to get into that until a couple of weeks out. So, the request here is move to approve the contract for asbestos abatement at Trenton Motor Inn site for a total of $31,700, and authorize JSVig to issue a contract and commence work.
So moved.
Moved and supported, any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered.
And just, just one footnote, because gentlemen was asking about the start date, these will, the, the asbestos abatement, they have to give a ten-day notice to the state of Michigan, they'll dive right into that, and as soon as that's done, I mean, the goal is, we want shovels in the ground in a matter of just a couple of weeks, and we want the demolition and everything to follow, everything should follow right along, but we're, we're going to be aggressive about getting as much earthwork and all the pre-work done that we can before the snow flies, so.
Thank you very much, Dean. All right, did we have any other late items, Madam Clerk?
No, we do not.
All right, I'll turn this over to our Mayor Pro Tem, Councilman Benedetti here, for dispersments and statements and then reports.
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve the authorized dispersments for October 14th, 2025, October 14th, 2025, in the amount of $1,303,736 and eighty-four cents.
Moved and supported, any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
Receiving place on file the following reports, financial summary, September 30th, 2025, scheduled investment and cash on hand, September 30th, 2025, Civic Commission minutes, September 8th, 2025, the DDA minutes, August 24th, 2025, and September 11th, 2025, zoning board of appeals minutes, July 10th, 2025, and a police department monthly report for September of 2025.
Moved and supported, any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you very much, Councilman. Okay, we'll go to other council business now, I don't have anything further this evening, and we'll get started tonight with Councilwoman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to thank Chief Anderson and Chief Hawkins for the presentation, really appreciate all the hard work that you and your teams went through, and it looks great, we're all very excited about it. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Bond Crox.
Yeah, I have the same feeling, I want to thank Dean Creach and our administration, and all that you have done to pursue this, because that's the biggest question in the community right now, when's the police and fire station going to come about, and I'm just so proud that the bond passed, that the money's there, things are moving along quite, quite wonderful, I think, and what the Chiefs did tonight has given us good little synopsis for the residents, and I'm really proud to say that it's going to turn proud of this administration and this council for all you've done to get this taken care of. And that's really all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Benedetti.
Uh, echo the same sentiments of the previous two council people, but then also I'd like to add that this Thursday is someone's birthday. I think she's only gonna be thirty, but I might be wrong with that. It might be twenty-five.
You're right, you're right.
Timber, your birthday will be Thursday.
You're always right.
Your birthday will be Thursday, and I want to wish you a happy birthday.
Yeah, thank you very much. Wish I was thirty. Thank you. Steven, too?
Uh, I'm, I'm not gonna be thirty anymore either. It's nice to dream.
Yeah.
Uh, Councilwoman Hornbeck?
Oh, yeah, I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Scott and some students from Trenton High School who came and met with us today, and expressed, um, their views on some things and their interest in learning more about the city government, and that was exciting. And thank you to the Fire Department for their involvement at the elementaries. I love picking up my kids and seeing all the kids run out in their fire hats. They're very excited that those plastic fire hats do a lot for them. Um, and I know, uh, my first grader hat does have an upcoming field trip to tour, uh, Station Two, so she's pretty excited about that as well. And, um, I think, just like everyone else said, the residents are gonna be thrilled with the new buildings. The drawings look amazing, and I know everyone's really looking forward to it.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Alright, Councilman Peruzzi.
Yes, this might be geared towards you and Mr. Creach. Um, so far with the project, are we under budget, at budget, over budget?
Dean, you wanna take that?
Which project?
Police and Fire.
Police and Fire. Uh, we're within, uh, um, less than two, we're, we're close to budget. Probably a little, a little over, but overall, bond project budget, um, we're, we're in very good shape, actually, 'cause we just got, um, some of the pricing back that you guys will see in two weeks, or three weeks, or whatever it is, uh, like with the library and stuff like that. So, um, everything is trending actually in a good, um, direction. And Brett is, um, uh, he knows what the numbers are and where we need to be, so the, the police chief and fire chief, I'll give them, um, credit, 'cause they were tasked with, um, modifying their plan a little bit, and they did it very, very well, and very, very good for the taxpayers and everything. So I think we're, we're on track. There's some unknowns, you know, uh, for instance, uh, police, police station, which you would think, oh, be real easy, just clear it out and, um, put the building up there. But after the core drilling and stuff like that, they got into all this undercutting and how much material they gotta pull out and compact and do all this stuff. And, and there's, so there's a lot of, um, things we just were in a broad sense, but, uh, Brett has been very good about, uh, reassuring me that we'll, we'll be on budget and on time, so.
Well, thank you.
Crossing our fingers.
And then the next one might be geared towards you.
Okay.
Do we have a Riverside Hospital update?
Yes. Um, the judge is coming out, what day? A week?
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday or whatever, meeting with the judge. He's actually gonna make a site visit. Um, the, the, the eyebrow is poured, that should be opened up by the end of this week. Um, so Atwood and Truax should be, um, are not, uh, Atwood and, um, George, no, Atwood, Truax and Atwood, I'm sorry, will both be done, completed, dried, everything's good to go. Um, on the top of the site, there's already, seed is down. Um, the rest of the site, as it goes down into the pit, um, I talked to the city engineer today, and he's doing a site visit either today or tomorrow, and before he's gonna approve the final grading plan, but there's still a fair amount of dirt that needs to be, um, moved. And then there is also the property split and the movement of a DTE pole that has to happen. Uh, so, the property, the property split with the abandonment of Truax, and then the acquisition of the north and the west parking lot, that's probably a six-week, I mean, once you get, no offense, Alan, not, once you get lawyers involved, it stretches out to eight or nine weeks. But, um, we're gonna, we'll get that done, and then everything should be rolling, rolling to an end. The, the, I hope to have grass seed down completely on the site, but we're not gonna approve the grass seed going down until the grade is where, where we, where we need the grade to be.
And with this meeting next week, what, what are you hoping to get from that meeting? Any outcome from that conversation?
We're on camera. Um, I, I think
The judge wants to be there to congratulate him for how he pushed this through.
Right. The judge wants to be there to see what he can't pick up from a pitcher.
Okay. And last but not least, I just wanna thank the, uh, Public Safety Chiefs for their presentations. Uh, much appreciated. So that's it, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Councilman Kebba Watten?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I echo a lot of the same as, uh, previous council members. Um, Dean, administration, good job. Chiefs, good job. I'm really excited to see it. It's gonna be a great investment in the community. Um, um, also in Parks and Rec, and, you know, everybody, so, uh, great, great job. It, it's really, some really needed investment in the community, and, uh, I think everybody's gonna, um, really benefit from it. Um, also, just wanna wish everybody a safe and happy, uh, Fourth, um, Fourth of July. Happy Halloween? Yeah, we skipped a couple seats. Um, happy Halloween. Um, you know, if you do have to be out there, um, driving around the community at the time everybody's trick-or-treating, just slow down, take it easy. Try to avoid that time. Let the, uh, let the kids that are out there trick-or-treating have their time and be safe out there. Other than that, that's all I have. Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilman. We'll go to our other elected officials now. Madam Clerk, do you have anything this evening?
Um, sure. I'd like to mention that, um, the city general election is on November fourth. We will not have any early voting for this election. Early voting will only be held during federal-state elections. So since this is a small city election, we will not have early voting. But the Clerk's office will be open on Saturday, November first, from nine AM to five PM for anybody that wants to vote absentee. And, um, our next council meeting is on Monday, November third, at seven PM. Election Day is Tuesday, November fourth, and the polls will be open from seven AM to seven PM. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Madam Assessor, do you have anything to that?
I don't have that.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Treasurer, got anything to that? Alright, thank you. Any of our department heads wishing to speak? Yeah, it's, uh, you hear the pin drop now. Um, anyone else? Alright, not seeing any. We'll go on to public comment here. Anyone wishing to speak? That's you begin with your name and address, direct all questions through me, and please limit your comment to five minutes. Alright, I will entertain a
So moved.
adjournment.
Support.
Moved and supported for adjournment at seven forty-eight PM. See you all in a couple weeks.